Those on silence or turn them off, we certainly would appreciate it. It's a pleasure to have all of you here this morning. I've got two special guests here this morning that's never been to a commissioner meeting. After twenty, gosh, twenty years. That is my wife and my daughter. If y'all would stand up, I'm gonna let them see who you really are. That's my wife with the red on and my daughter. And Timmy brought his wife this morning. Ms. Julie, if you would stand up, I would like to introduce you to the crowd. Now, are there any other commissioner guests out there that their husbands are up here and they didn't? Jappy says his has not got here yet, so when she does, we might interrupt and introduce her. We're now going to call on Commissioner Anthony Simmons to call on a young lady for our invocation, and then Anthony will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, everybody. I felt that since we've had such beautiful year this term, we want to end this on a good note, so I asked my pastor to come in and give us our final prayer for this year. She's always uplifting and good spirited, and she'll probably have us dancing in the aisles and stuff. So I want to introduce to you Ms. Mary Odom Lee. She's the interim pastor at our church, it's Thomas Grove Baptist Church. It's up to you.
Amen, amen. Bless God this morning. We bless this audience this morning. We are grateful to be in the house this morning. Are you grateful to be here? Amen, amen. I have been asked to pray this morning, so I asked if you would pray with me. The word of God says men ought to always pray. So let us pray. Our Father, our God, our Lord, how excellent, oh God, is thy name in all the earth. You are the Lord over heaven, and you are the Lord over earth. You are the all-wise, all-knowing, you are the all-seeing, all-powerful, and all-sovereign God. We pause at this time to give thanks for all your blessings, for you have blessed us individually, you have blessed us collectively, and God, you are blessing us at this moment. So we thank you. Lord, you've kept us through this year, through seen and unseen dangers, and we pause now to give you glory. We thank you today for the freedom to meet together this morning, citizens of Bullock County, county commissioners, county workers, county officials. We are grateful for their willing hearts and caring spirits who assume the responsibility to lead, direct, and make decisions for Bullock County. God, we thank you for this county board of commissioners. We thank you, Lord God, as we now invoke your presence over this meeting and this agenda. We ask that you would give them godly wisdom and strength in making decisions that would be beneficial for the citizens of our county. We seek your will to unite this board of commissioners with fruitful outcomes on every resolution and decision that's made in this house on today. God, we thank you this morning for our government officials. We thank you for the mayor of the city. We thank you for the city council. We thank you, Lord God, for the city planner. We thank you, Lord, for our law enforcement, our police officers, our sheriffs. Lord, we thank you for those who are keeping our city safe while we are comfortable in our homes and in our beds. We give you glory for them. We thank you, God, for the firemen, Lord, the judges, the superintendent of our schools. We thank you, God, for pastors and spiritual leaders. God, we are so grateful for our school superintendent and educators. But Lord, we thank you this morning for keeping our children and our schools safe in our city and in our county. God, as we pray this morning, let us not forget what has just happened in Madison, in the county, in this state, Lord God of Wisconsin. You know their hearts. You know their pain, and God, we trust you in it, for you're the only one at this time who can give them comfort. So God, we just say now, do it. Do it because we asked. And thank you for the privilege, oh God, for allowing us to be able to boldly come to you and to trust you in all that we do. Lord, we might have disagreements, but Lord, let us never become disagreeable. We ask all these blessings in the name of our Lord and our Savior, whom we are celebrating and looking forward to during this season, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pray that you agents, to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Next, we will have our roll call.
I, Venus Smithy White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman Roy Thompson, Vice Chairman Ray Davis, Commissioner Ray Mosley, Commissioner Anthony Simmons, Commissioner Jappy Stringer, Commissioner Timmy Rushing, and Commissioner Toby Connor. I've determined that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present, therefore we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. And now, you're the floor back to the chairman.
Thank you very much, and as promised, I have just witnessed Commissioner Stringer's wife walk in, and I would like for him to stand up and introduce her.
My wife Emily's here. She has never been to a commissioner meeting either this morning.
We have three presentations this morning, and I have the pleasure of the very first one. In our audience, we have, I'm assuming probably seniors and coaches at Bullock Academy, and if they would step forward, we have a proclamation for you this morning. Right here. Congratulations. Y'all just sort of gather around. Let's see, let's see if the middle legs gather around behind us. You want to introduce your coaching staff?
My name is Aaron Phillips. I'm the head football coach at Bullock Academy. This is Charlie Hopkins, he's our offensive line and assistant offensive coordinator. This is Robbie Holder, he's our defensive coordinator. And Coach Jason Goddard, he's back there, he's our assistant athletic director.
We certainly appreciate, and this is seniors?
These are twelve of the fourteen seniors.
Okay. And the, well, that's my special privilege, and our special privilege, and their special privilege to get to witness this this morning. We do, Board of Commissioners has a proclamation for you for just your recent accomplishments, and it says, whereas the Bullock County, the Bullock Academy Gators won their last state championship in the Georgia Independent School Association in 1997, and the school now competes in the Georgia Independent Athletic Association, and the Gators finished their 2024 regular season undefeated and entered the state playoffs as the number-two seed and received a bye in the first round, and the Gators defeated Saint Anne Paschal 37 to 0 in the second round of the playoffs, and the Gators defeated Brookstone 20 to 14 in the semifinal round of the playoffs, and the Gators defeated First Presbyterian 14 to 10 in the title game at Pausen Stadium, and the Gators outscored their opponents 399 to 89 over the course of 12 games, and the Gators finished the season with a perfect undefeated season of 12-0, and the Gators were led by 14 seniors in the 2024 season. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Bullock County Board of Commissioners recognizes and congratulates the Bullock County Gators, Bullock Academy, I'm sorry, Gators, on their 2024 GIAA, AAA, AAA states championship, and join the community in celebrating your hard work and achievement. We want y'all to have this, and if you'll hang it somewhere that everyone could see it, we certainly appreciate it, and we're going to take a picture, I'm certain, we're going to ask the commissioners if they will stand behind us back there.
Alex, it's up to you. ... in the process of getting this proclamation after their state championship, Bullock Academy's cheerleading team has subsequently won a state championship, and just yesterday, our Southeast Bullock ladies' flag football team won their state championship, so those proclamations are in the pipeline, and I think we're going to start ordering those frames in bulk, just to keep all set. We'll get pictures real quick. Like, if you come over that way just a little bit, so I can get it, everybody, and I'll leave this little screen line on my ear. All right. My man. It's okay to stand up in the seat if you'd like.
mental health first aid certification, Ms. Jolene Orfield.
Good morning. Thank you so much. At this time, if you would allow me, I would like to ask one of our HR team members, Jolene Orfield, to come forward and stand with me at the podium while I brag on her a little bit. Jolene, most of you know, is our benefits administrator and has been with the county for about seven years, and I wanted to just let you know of a recent accomplishment. She has earned a certification in adult mental health first aid, which you may or may not have heard of. It's a relatively new certification, and it requires both self-directed and instructor-led coursework to earn. This particular certification provides early intervention education, and it teaches adults how to recognize the signs and symptoms that suggest a potential mental health challenge, how to listen without judgment and give reassurance to those who might be experiencing such a challenge, and how to refer that person for appropriate professional support and services. According to the National Institutes of Mental Health, more than one in five U.S. adults live with mental illness, and our workforce, about 1,000 strong, when you look at all of our part-time and full-timers, our workforce is certainly not immune to that. The knowledge that Jolene gained during achieving this certification really helps remove some of the stigma around mental illness and better equips us to support those employees who might be experiencing a mental health challenge. So Jolene didn't have to achieve this certification, so I'm proud that she took the initiative to do that, and I wanted to just publicly recognize her for her efforts in this important but much overlooked area of employee health. So I have her certificate here with me today, and wanted to just present this to her and ask you to join me in congratulating her on earning this certification. Congratulations.
Sure.
Do you mind? Can they stay up there for time purposes?
Works perfect. Y'all look just as good the second time.
Thank you.
While I'm here, if I can just, if you will give me like a 30-second additional privilege, and I'm sorry, nobody knows that I was going to do this, I would like to ask you to join me in congratulating another member of our HR team, if she's in the house, Stacy Bradley, or if you're here, would you just stand up? She is not here. Okay, she is doing important things, but I still wanted to publicly recognize her as well. I just received word over the weekend that Stacy, our HR specialist, has completed all of the requirements to earn the Certified Human Resources Manager Certification from the Carl Vinson Institute of Government at UGA. So I'm proud of her for achieving that. It requires a significant investment of time, 13 courses, six hours each, and a final project. That's the approval that we received over the weekend was for that final project, so I just wanted to share that good news as well. So thank you. I'm very proud of both of these individuals and wanted just to publicly acknowledge them for being tremendous assets to the county. Thank you.
Well, I think we're going to do something. Dean, will you go get her? We're going to have a picture made with her, but we'll go ahead with our...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt you. We do have another distinguished guest here, and if I could have him to stand up, Mr. Walter Gibson, he's been a commissioner for almost as long as I have. Stand up, Walter. Everybody knows you.
You ready? Go ahead. We'll have the picture with her once you...
Sure.
Thank you, if she's not hiding.
Sure. She may be at the other location, but we'll find her. But if you'd like to move on to the next one, that's, oh, sweet. I just bragged on you publicly, and they wanted to make sure to take your photo, so...
Thank you very much. Someone else has entered the room, and Commissioner Davis reminded me of that, so I'm going to let you introduce Ms. Belinda.
My wife, Belinda Davis, is here also.
Today is Ray's 71st birthday.
You want to sing to you? You going to sing it for me, Jill?
Let me warm my voice up.
Now, moving on.
Thank you. I'll be extremely brief this time. Those of you, well, all of you will remember that the county's engaged in a workforce development study with MGT Consulting. Mr. Alan Rosen was here a few weeks ago to provide the report on Phase One of that study, and today he's here to give us an update and to provide us with his analysis in Phase Two. So Alan, if you don't mind coming forward, we've got your presentation queued up. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioner Alan Rosen with MGT. I feel like I was just here, and it's an honor to be back. I just want to say thank you to everybody, for everybody on your staff who's been extremely helpful with providing information. You've got a very dedicated staff who does everything they can with the resource that they have at their fingertips. So this is Phase Two, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. We're going to talk a little bit about the overall impetus for the study, what we did in Phase One, what we did in Phase Two, and then what Phase Three is going to be like. And then we'll have time for questions. You can go to the next slide. So the overall purpose was to kind of take a look at, with all the tremendous growth you've been having in the county and the growth to come, what resources do you have to provide the services that you give to your residents and the businesses, and how is that going to change in the near future, and what resources are you going to need to continue that level of service going forward? That's the basic idea. There were some other things that we'll talk about as well. So Phase One was really talking about where you were in the past. So the last five years, how have you grown? Have you changed? What services have you provided at what level? Phase Two really looked at, between now and five years in the future, how is that going to change? What additional workload is there going to be based on the increase? And what resources are you going to need to provide the same services pretty much that you provide now? And then what other things are going to change that going forward? And then Phase Three is establishing metrics to kind of measure success over time based on this study. Next slide, please. So there was a lot to Phase Two. We looked at the future workload, the future staffing levels that would go along with that, any organizational structure, things that we saw that might help provide more efficient and effective services. We also did soft skills, skillset needs, emotional intelligence, and we did some succession planning for each of the departments, and you'll see some summaries of that today. We looked at information technology and how that's being provided in the county right now and what it might look like in the future, and also how AI will transform local government in the future and how it's transforming it today, a really interesting topic for me at least. So population growth. So we took a look at the census, we took a look at housing starts, we looked at historical levels, average household size, time to occupy those permitted homes. We combined all that information, and we found that you're likely going to see a 22% increase in population between 2024 and 2030. So you're at about 86,000 right now, you're probably looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of 105,000 in about five years. So if you look at all of your departments, some of them, they're going to grow at different rates, depending on what you decide as a board and with your executive team, how you want to grow in the future. Some of them, they're going to grow at different rates for different reasons. So your outwardly facing departments are probably going to be directly impacted by the growth in population. Those are things like EMS, 911, animal services, public safety, anything that's publicly outward facing, we've seen directly impacted by the growth in the population. Those things that you're going to see an indirect result of the population increase are going to be things like HR and finance, internal services. Those internal services will need to grow at a different rate to serve the other departments that are going to grow at a larger rate. So for example, best practices in Society for Human Resources Management says that you should have a certain number of HR professionals per 100 FTEs you have in the organization. So those things might want to follow along as the rest of the county grows. Some, we might see no increases, but this is due to a lack of space. So there are some courts, one of the jails, some parks programs, that really you can't have any more people provide services unless that space grows, and I know that the county's in the middle of another study looking at space allocation needs for the future too, so this kind of goes hand in hand with that. So in order to grow, in order to provide the same level of services that you provide now, so most of this is not increased that would provide additional services, it's just to maintain your current service levels. In five years, you'll have to increase by about 83 FTEs, so that's about a 13% increase versus the 22% increase in population. So right now, you have about 651 FTEs in the departments that we studied. We didn't study all of the departments, we studied probably 90, 95% of them. That would grow to about 734 in five years, and again, most of that is just to maintain current service levels. So organizational structure, things that we looked at, some of the things that we found that would help out would be the creation of an administrative services director to oversee HR, IT, and finance, and some of these relate to this. So we look at span of control. There's a lot of studies out there on span of control, and it's really different for every different type of position. If you're a manager of a department where everybody's doing the same thing every day all the time, there's not a lot of new stuff going on, you can have one person managing a lot of people. Where you have a manager who's managing somebody who sees something different every day, at the county manager level, assistant county manager, department director level, you really need a smaller span of control to be able to have that person provide enough time to mentor and kind of go back and forth on decision-making to make sure you're making the right decision for your organization and for the citizens. And so you're already doing this in certain areas. You have a public safety director. So the county manager, the assistant county manager doesn't have to manage all of those divisions underneath that department. Same thing is true for Parks and Recreation. It's a very large organization. You've got a Parks and Rec director that manages a lot of that and can bring those issues up to the county manager, so it lessens the burden of that person to have oversee 17, 20, or 30 departments. It's impossible for somebody to do that in a very good, manageable way. So by doing this also with administrative services, you again lessen that span of control and allows that assistant county manager, county manager, the time to be able to adequately work with that person on a basis to provide them the supervision that they need to do a better job. Transitioning IT into a department overseen by admin services director, that's another one. The county is kind of on that trajectory already. You created a new position this fiscal year. To kind of move in that direction, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then consider creating another assistant deputy or assistant to the county manager. Those are all management-level positions that would help oversee some of the departments. Again, you have a lot of departments, it's a big organization, it's easier to have that span of control over that spread. And then considering GIS function alignment, right now it's in the tax assessor's office. There's a lot of uses for GIS in organizations that have blossomed over the last 10, 15 years, and what we saw is, you had five peers that we looked at, and this one I was concerned a little bit more about because I wanted a broader reach. So I looked at about 12 other organizations in Georgia, about the same size as Bullock County, and what I found is there's only one other county that has GIS in the tax assessor's office. I'd say not the majority of them, but the big bulk of them have them in IT or under the county manager's office. The reason for that, we see, is generally because it's better under an agnostic umbrella, meaning IT doesn't use GIS services, they just help make sure that it's used democratically throughout the organization, so as people need it, as tickets come in, I need this, I need this map, I want to look at this, they can kind of manage that process. There's also kind of a nexus between those skillsets. And then consolidating parks and grounds and facilities for easier management. I know there's been a little bit of a change with the new director, and they're trying to chart their course... and they're trying to chart their course and how to manage that department. But we did see a lot of nexus between those two departments, a lot of similar positions, a lot of borrowing resources back and forth. So that may kind of streamline some of those operations in Parks and Recreation. For emotional intelligence, so emotional intelligence, there's, there's kind of four areas that make us human, right? If you look at research, there's your personality, there's your IQ. Sorry, I said four, there's three. And there's emotional intelligence. Research to date basically says that you can, you can't change your personality. You can't change your IQ, but you can change EQ. EQ is really just skillsets, right? If you wanted to get better at baseball, you have to practice baseball. You know, if you want your arms, you know, bigger biceps, you gotta go to the gym and lift weights. EQ is the same thing. So we took 30 mostly random subjects throughout the county to get a general idea of where you are on these skillsets. And that's a statistically significant level number of people based on the people that you have, the number of people you have in the organization. We use the EQI 2.0 model. They again looks at these 15 skillsets. And we found that no skillset actually was statistically significantly lower than the general population. And this is compared against 2,400 other professionals in the United States and Canada. So that's great news. Actually, one of them was higher. Impulse control was actually statistically above the average. But what we also found, there were some skills, skillsets that were lower. We already know that there is a leadership development training program in the county. So one of the things we were tasked to do is, if we were to look at this, what kind of things do we wanna build skillsets within the county? And so we would recommend these five. Emotional expression, assertiveness, independence were lower. Again, not statistically different from the population, but a little bit lower. And those will help bring up the professionalism of those people in the organization. And then I would always recommend self-awareness and empathy. If you do a lot of reading on leadership and leadership development, those two skills pop up over and over again. Great leaders are self-aware. And emotional intelligence, always good to push those two. Next slide. So there are succession planning recommendations for almost all of the departments that we've seen. What I wanted to do was kind of combine a lot of those that came up most often and provide those to you because you probably don't want me here talking for about 40 minutes on each department. There's a lot more detail in each department, but these are kind of the often mentioned ones that we found. For leadership development and training, creating hands-on opportunities and job shadowing and mentoring, there was a lot of mention when we talked to staff about the fact that, you know, they don't know what their supervisor's doing. Everybody's busy trying just to do their job. They might like to be promoted, but they don't really know what's involved in it. So having those hands-on opportunities to do those higher level jobs, to job shadow and mentor will provide them that opportunity to really see what it's like to go to that next level. Enhanced EQ training, emotional intelligence that we kind of talked about. And offer budget management training. This was an often cited thing from leaders themselves who didn't really know a lot about managing budget in terms of strategic. Not, I'm not talking about entering the budget into the system. This is, how do I strategically manage my budget? They wanted more training in that area. So for knowledge management and retention, creating standard operating procedures, workflows, other procedures, these help when people leave the organization. Separated for any reason, that knowledge walks out the door. So the more standard operating procedures you can have in different operations, it makes that transition easier because then people can literally pick that up and say, oh, this is how we do this. And you can move on. It's not that you, it's a living, breathing document. You can always change it and make it better. But at least people have a general understanding of how workflows. Creating an internal pipeline program for future leaders, that kind of goes along with that job shadowing, right? Bringing people along and giving them those skills that they need to grow into those future roles within the county. And then cross-training current staff within departments. This is happening in a lot of departments. A lot of departments say, we're doing really well at this. Some say, we'd like to do better. And so providing that provides a lot of backup. If somebody's out, if somebody's sick, if somebody leaves, you've got somebody there who understands all the operations in the organization and they can kind of move back and forth. So workforce development planning. We'll talk a little bit about this later as well. But enhancing training for technology, AI, communication, time management, and skills aligned with future needs. As you go through each of the different departments, it kind of talks within each department what these skills are that the managers think are really important in the next coming five years. So making sure that those things are being provided to those people who really want to grow are there for them. And then defining clear advancement pathways. I talked a little bit about this in Phase One, but these are things like, especially in small departments where you only have three or four or five positions. People get into those departments and sometimes they can't see their way out. They can't see a future because there's just no opportunity because it's so small. What some organizations do is, and you have this in some of the departments, is creating a stratification of some of those positions. So administrative assistant, one, two, three, four. You can do that for a lot of different positions. It doesn't mean you need to fill all of them. It just means that they're there. So that you can help recognize the years of service, the education, the experience that that person has over time, so that they know they have a pathway to succeed. And it's not just, I'm here for 20 years in this position and that's all there is. Technology and process improvements. So investing in tools like open record management. I know that the county's already working on that. AI-based solutions, which there are more and more of these every day. And continuous training. A lot of times I see organizations do an ERP. It's a enterprise resource plan, right? Your finance, your HR system. You transition to another one because people feel like it doesn't work for them. And then you go find out, there was really not a lot of ongoing training. It probably did what you needed it to do. But then governments spend millions of dollars going to another one. And then five or six years down the line, they're in the same spot because they don't provide that continuous training. So you're not in that position. I'm just saying that you don't wanna get there. So to provide that continuous training is important. Taking full advantage of current technologies. The Tyler system has a module for purchasing. This is just, you know, one example of taking advantage of those opportunities to work towards implementing that because it can increase the efficiency and effectiveness of those kind of operations. And then incorporating more analytics for data-driven decision-making. The county does already gather and report a ton of performance metrics, much more than most of your peers. But there's a way you can actually kind of narrow that down and report on things that are really important to all of the stakeholders, for you, for the citizens, for the leaders and the people working those departments, to really see how well we're doing. And we're gonna work on that for Phase Three. Next slide. And then recruitment and retention strategies. So regularly evaluating compensation and benefits to remain competitive. I noticed a lot of departments had issues, especially in Phase One, when we were talking about how many positions they had to do the job they had. Here's all the authorized positions, but we've got this many vacancies. It hits some departments harder than others. There's two sides to every coin, right? Development and growth is amazing. It's wonderful, it's great. You're bringing growth and opportunities to the county. At the same time, that growth and opportunity strikes your workforce as other opportunities out there that they could go to and make more money. So unless this is, you know, a place that they wanna stay and grow and learn and can, you know, provide a good resource for their family, then they may end up going somewhere else, right? So there's two sides. So kind of constantly going back and just checking to make sure that your pay and benefits are where they need to be within the region. So that you're retaining and attracting good qualified candidates is something that organizations do and just continue to do that over time. Developing partnerships with higher educational institutions to pipeline talent into the county. So this was something we saw, you're like, hey, how do we find people? We're losing people and we don't know where to get these people. You have a great resource here in your county with Georgia Southern and some other higher educational institutions. There are some connections already, but try to strengthen those connections with those higher ed and maybe even high school institutions to bring people directly into the county even before they graduate. So they see an opportunity here and maybe don't leave to go somewhere else. Addressing workplace concerns like work-life balance. We heard some comments from staff that, you know, I'd like to stay, but I really want a part-time job so that I can, you know, be with my family more, but there's no opportunity for me to do that. Or I'd like to figure out something with childcare so that I can be here and actually do the job that I need to do. There wasn't a lot of that, but there was some. So just kind of keeping those feelers out to see what you might wanna do to keep people around for the future. So shifting over to information technology. So we put together a plan that's kind of a short-term and long-term and medium-term plan for the county, what we might see. Most of your peers, except for one, have their own internal IT department for a county this size. And so you've already moved in a direction. I know you have a contract with a provider that provides desktop help and purchasing help with the equipment and helping run your servers and emergency services, that sort of stuff. You have created a position called the technology coordinator. It would be great to fill that position because that's kind of your first foray into like, how can we kind of manage this on our own? Plus the fact now that you had an assistant county manager that's no longer here, she's there, that had to manage this contractor on her own in addition to all the other day-to-day operations. So kind of extracting your executive management from day-to-day operations, allowing them to do their actual job and providing somebody that can run this contract. But in addition to just running that contract, looking for the future of what IT looks like at this county. So establishing a governance committee. Governance committee are committee members of people within the organization from different departments who can kind of help make decisions about what are our IT policies? What are, what are our risk management policies related to IT? How do we move forward? What do we decide to buy? What do we not buy? What makes sense, what doesn't make sense? They can kind of push that committee forward and then begin working on an IT strategic plan. Getting somebody in here who really knows IT and can do an IT strategic plan and a risk assessment for IT is critical, especially in today's society when people are constantly trying to hack into government servers and things and whole. You've seen what happened in Atlanta, I'm sure, a couple of years ago, holding Atlanta ransom, somebody clicks on malware. If you don't train people what to do, these kind of things can happen because they just don't know. So getting all of that information together and then moving forward with that. So beginning that, getting somebody on board to do that. And then in medium term, six to 12 months, assessing and adopting those IT policies that the committee's been working on and what comes out of that IT strategic plan, completing that and then starting to implement that. And then between 12 and 24 months, implementing IT refresh cycle. This is just like any other capital improvement plan that you have. Everything that you're looking at now, everything that you're working on in your offices, the servers that run your IT systems, these all need to be refreshed because if they don't, they stop working, they stop being supported. And if something happens, it's just not there anymore, right? So just like any other capital plan, like cars or buildings, these need to be included in that to make sure you know what resources you need going forward. And then providing continuous training, as we talked about before. This is, these positions are not included in the additional positions that I mentioned previously. This is just an idea of if you were gonna go towards a hybrid model, which is where most agencies are going nowadays for government. Because we, our main job is not IT. We are not an IT company. Government is not an IT company. We don't have enough money to be an IT company. So there's a lot of hybrid activity where you outsource a lot of activity, but you have a core group of people here providing the day-to-day services and managing those contracts. So this is just a sample of how you might grow that IT department over a five-year period. And there's much more information in the report about what each of these positions do. Next slide. This was a really interesting topic for me. And I hope it doesn't bore anybody. But this is, this is like when PCs first came into the workplace. I'm sure unfortunately, many of us are old enough to remember that. But we are. Happy birthday, by the way. So I remember, you know, when, when PCs first came in, they had us and other people start playing with it, right? Just play with it, play solitaire. We want you to play solitaire because we want you to figure out how the mouse works. We want you to figure out how the keyboard works. AI is gonna be the same thing. Giving opportunities for people to play with it, to see how it can change the job that they do. And that's also helps reduce the fear and anxiety around AI. I use AI all the time. I will say it hallucinates a lot. You have to be very careful with it right now. I had an argument with it for about 20 minutes the other day about whether 206 BCE was the third century or second century. It was wrong, by the way. And it finally realized it. But you have to have people here with critical thinking skills, humans who understand their job and understand what the right answers are. It can help you hasten the job that you do. But at this point, it is not replacing people. It will just help you do your job quicker and faster as long as you know what to look for. So one of the first things you wanna do, and the IT policy committee can help out with this, is establish AI policies. I've linked to some in the report for Boston and Tempe, Arizona. There are organizations that have already created AI policies. So you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You can look at what they have and help implement that. So you're using it in the correct way for your organization. Obviously edit it for, for your needs. We did some research on current and future uses to determine best use case for Bullock counties. I've included some of them here. They're more in the report. Some of them, governments are already using for these purposes. So ensuring plans are consistent with code. If you accept plans electronically, there are systems out there that will go through and compare that to what your code is and give your planners information to say, here are areas you may wanna look. So it doesn't replace your planners because again, it can give you wrong information. It may not be trained very well. You want them to go look at it, but it reduces workload by maybe 15%, 15, 20%. Because it'll do that first draft review for you and then you go back and just make sure that it looks right. Enhancing inspections. So we're already using drones for inspections. A lot of people are, especially for those dangerous tourist places where you don't want people up on roofs, they might fall off, using drones. But now, AI is actually getting so good, it's reviewing video for you. So instead of having people out there, you could literally have, I know this is kind of a sense of talk that was going on in New Jersey and California and other areas. But you can have a fleet of drones here that go to the site and review external information, review the video, and then give the person back here information about, hey, check the video at 30 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes. These are areas where we think the roof may not have been done correctly. And so again, it reduces the timeframe for travel. It reduces the timeframe for looking at what may be wrong. Crime detection, there's something, I think it was Albany, Georgia, that was doing this. I can't remember what city it was. But looking at crime detection in terms of, you know, shots fired and audio detection. And they were combining AI with this and actually responding to incidents before 911 calls actually came in. This is something real that's going on now. Report writing and data analysis for anybody, finance, HR. Basically taking information, helping you write reports, make them sound and look better. But again, going through and making sure they're right. Building maintenance, a lot of systems are coming out now with AI technology that will help provide you information on when things are probably likely to break so that you can focus your resources on where you need to for building so that you're not just going randomly checking things to make sure. One of the things that didn't make it in the report, it was my idea and Axon Body Cameras totally stole this from me. But because AI can look at video, I talked to police officers and police chiefs that I've known. And they said that about 20 to 30% of their time is taken with report writing. Now, some information comes over from the CAD system. You know, when the call came in, who made the call, maybe what it was, what the officer was responding, where the location was. But the narrative is something they literally sit there and write in. It takes 20 to 30% of their day. Axon Body Cameras is now doing a beta test in a city in Connecticut. I can't remember which one. They're actually using the Axon Body Camera. When they go to situations, the camera is actually recording everything that's going on and writing the report in real time. They go back to their vehicle. The report is there for them to review. There's certain, certain things in place where they have to make sure that they review it because the AI will put in gibberish that you can't see just by looking at it. You have to actually read the report to make sure the officer reads the report and make sure that it's correct.[1683.22] sure that it's correct, because again, you know, it can put out wrong information. This is reducing timelines by 20% to 30% in report writing. These are just science fiction things that are coming true in our own time and are really interesting. So there's a lot of opportunity. Some of their governments are using it for 411 centers. So instead of hiring maybe 10 to 15 people to answer the phone and answer basic questions, you can have an AI chatbot answer those questions and point people in the right direction in the future. That's happening now, too. And then just implementing those enhancements. So Phase Three, I'm already working on this and I expect to be done in the next week or two. This is really just taking some KPIs, key performance indicators, for all the departments that we looked at and saying, here are things, critical things you may want to measure now and in the future to make sure that you're providing the services that you want to provide. There's no right answer or wrong answer about how well you want to provide those services. That's really up to you. And then you give that information to the county manager and your staff, and they go forth with, with what those recommendations are. But to be able to measure how you're doing over time will really help citizens and you and people that are doing those jobs understand how well they're doing, how efficient they're doing, and how effective they're doing those, those jobs. And again, I think I'll be done with that in a couple of weeks, and that puts us on time and on budget for this project. And if there are any questions, be happy to take them.
Have any questions? Hearing none, we thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next, we'll be moving to approval of the general agenda. I've been asked to remove item number two from the consent agenda, and does anyone else have any modifications? Then, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the general agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, show of hands, unanimous approval. I'll compel the read now, the consent agenda. We will have 17 items with the removal of item number two. It's, one, is approve the minutes from Tuesday, December 3, 2024, grant a 25, 2025 alcoholic beverage renewal license for package retail beer and wine sales and pouring sales to certain establishments with a current 2025 license. Four, is granted 2025 alcoholic beverage renewal license for beer and wine pouring sales to Nicky Green and April Cooper Blue Awakenings LLC located at 8741 Highway 301 South, Suite C. Item five, is approval amendment to the ground lease agreement with Airevac EMS Incorporated to extend the term of the original agreement. Item number six, approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of Fletchshire Way in Phase Four of Brook Run Subdivision. Item seven, approve a resolution to establish a special streetlight district for Phase Five of River Bluff Subdivision. Eight, approve a resolution to establish a special streetlight district for Phase One of Rexford Subdivision. Nine, approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of roads in Phase One, Two, and Three of River, River Bluff Subdivision. Ten, approve a resolution to approve ACCG Group Self-Insurance Workers' Compensation Fund Renewal. Eleven, approve and ratify the use of Sand Creek Land Construction for hauling services for the week of November the 25th through November the 27th, 2024, in the amount of Twelve, approve and ratify the use of Sand Creek Land Construction for hauling services for the week of December the 7th, December the 2nd through December 6th, 2024, in the amount of $21,918.75. Thirteen, approve and ratify the use of JL Deriso for hauling services for the week of December the 2nd through December the 4th, 2024, in the amount of $19,552.75. Fourteen, approve a 2025 intergovernmental agreement for animal control and municipal court services with the city of Brooklyn. Fifteen, approve a 2025 intergovernmental agreement for animal control and municipal court services with the city of Portal. Sixteen, approve the purchase of two dump trucks from Solid Waste Applied Technologies in the amount of $440,000. Seventeen, approve a T-hanger site work project with Mill Creek Construction Corporation Incorporated in the amount of $3,099,798.09. And eighteen, is approve the adoption of the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan prepared by Goodwin Mills Kaywood, better known as GMC. We can approve these items all collectively, or if there's any one that you would like to single out for discussion, we can do so at present time. So have a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We have a motion to approve them all collectively. And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands, unanimous approval. Thank you very much. We're going to move into new business. We're going to have interim county manager Cindy Steinman. We'll have a discussion about Statesboro Food Bank.
Thank you. As you may know, the remainder of our ARPA funds must be obligated by December 31st of this year, and the Statesboro Food Bank has requested an additional $252,000 to complete the construction of their new facility. You all have a previously approved ARPA funds to assist with the project, and so if you choose to approve this, we recommend the use of ARPA funds as well. And I will point out, I think the narrative in your packet states that it is interest earnings, but it's actual ARPA money. So that I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if Christie would like to add anything, you're welcome to.
Any questions? Then, hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion, second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands, unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Item number two, again, is interim county manager Cindy Steinman.
Thank you. This is also in regards to the ARPA funds that needs to be obligated by the end of the year. The Recreation Department has been working with Willow Hill to locate a potential recreation facility for Portal Communities' use. They've spent some time looking at the property that's available, and the department has determined that the, the available property doesn't meet the needs of the Recreation Department. However, we, we believe that the need still exists for outdoor facilities in the Willow Hill area, so the staff recommends to obligate the remaining ARPA funds in the amount of $150,000 to, to construct such outdoor facility. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And again, Christie's available for questions as well. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I so approve. Seven.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, anything? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands, unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Item number three is the agreement to establish groundwater sustainability program, and this will be led by Jeff Akins.
Yes, sir. Yes, this agreement or the groundwater sustainability program has, has been presented and discussed at two previous meetings, and the agreement you have before you between Bryan and Bullock Counties implements and obligates the counties to comply with the groundwater sustainability program, which is attached to and incorporated into the agreement by reference. The agreement has a 25-year term, and it also obligates the counties to work with other municipal governments to expeditiously and thoroughly plan, bore, and secure the timely provision of future surface water or other feasible alternative water supplies as a replacement for the Florida and Aquafor groundwater authorized by the EPD permits and in accordance with the special conditions of the permits. And it's my understanding that Bryan County, the Bryan County Commissioners approved this agreement last night, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm the seventh generation to farm that land down in the lower part of Bullock County. My son is the eighth, my grandson is the ninth. I was advised to submit this if, for the record, if that's applicable. If not, it can be FYI information. And these are simply the GPS locations of the wells that may, could be, very likely will be affected by these Hyundai wells. And I'd like to distribute that this time if I could.
Okay.
Dale, would you mind?
Just make sure Jeff.
My business, my community, not necessarily in that order, are very concerned about this project going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We can, Venus, do you have a copy? We can put this on the record as a, as an exhibit to the minutes, I think.
All right. Well, if you would do so. And as Jeff's just stated, we will put this on the records towards exhibit to the minutes. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Commissioners, any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this agreement for the groundwater stability.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Five to one vote, unanimous for, I mean.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, you need to ask for any opposition. All opposition.
Opposition? All right, five to one. Approved. We've got item number four, Mr. Akins, you have a discussion on that one.
Yes, sir. This is a right-of-way agreement with Valnoc LLC. Through the Development Authority of Bullock County, Valnoc LLC has obtained a Georgia Rural Workforce Housing Initiative Equity Fund Award, that's a mouthful, from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, authorizing a grant for covered infrastructure cost associated with the development of Cornerstone Point Subdivision. And one of the grant requirements is that Bullock County must accept the rights of way for the subdivision roads prior to construction of the roads. That's different from what we normally do under the subdivision ordinance. But the agreement before you authorizes Bullock County to accept the subdivision road rights of way, in consideration for the developer posting a surety bond or letter of credit in the amount of 100% of the estimated cost of the infrastructure. The agreement also obligates the developer to pay the cost of paving a portion of Anderson Cemetery Road, an existing county road, from its intersection with Highway 67 to the first entrance of the subdivision. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you may have about it.
Commissioners, any questions, comments? In hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We have a motion to approve, a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, show of hands, unanimous approval. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Akins, you have the next item.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the, this is, this related to the same grant that was, that I discussed in the previous item, and one of the other grant requirements is that Bullock County must appropriate up to $250,000 toward construction or improvement of county infrastructure associated or, yeah, associated with the project, I guess. And it's been proposed that the county appropriate $250,000 in T-Sploß funds to go toward the paving of Anderson Cemetery Road and/or improvements to the intersection of Anderson Cemetery Road and Highway 67. And I think Mr. Chris Gohegan is here to present this further. Is there anything else you want to add?
I'm happy to add some additional comments about it. Thank you, Mr. Akins, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Chris Gohegan. I'm an attorney with Talby Rushing Law Firm here in town and pleased to be here this morning as agent for the Development Authority of Bullock County and Valnoc LLC, which is the developer of this project, to ask your approval of this request for funding up to $250,000 for construction of a D cell lane off of Highway 67 at Anderson Cemetery Road, and then paving of a portion of Anderson Cemetery Road between 67 and Clifton Road. As Mr. Akins mentioned, this is a requirement of a $2.44 million grant awarded to the Development Authority of Bullock County as it pertains to construction of infrastructure within the Cornerstone Point development, which is going to include 79 new construction three and four-bedroom homes at this site. Just for your information, some information about the, the funding program, the Rural Workforce Housing Initiative is an element of the One Georgia Equity Fund, which is a general-purpose fund designated for community improvements to promote workforce housing at an affordable price point. It's administered by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. It's available to general-purpose local governments who are permitted to apply in partnership with housing developers. To be clear, the Development Authority of Bullock County is the recipient of this award. It was the applicant. Private developers are not entitled to apply for this program. It has to come through an arm of the government, as it did in this case. Only eligible counties who are in compliance with state auditing, auditing requirements can submit applications, and only where there's a proven need for affordable workforce housing within that community. Additional restrictions are funds are only available for infrastructure development, importantly, for housing with a per-unit cost of no more than $290,000. Grant awards can be up to $2.5 million, and in this case, the grant award is for $2.44 million, and there is an expectation of locally leveraged resources, which is the reason we're here before you today. It's identical to the requirement that you may have seen in community development block grants that have come through this commission in the past. Importantly, projects must be substantially completed within two years to ensure that there's an efficient use of the funds. The governor in authorizing this program stated that the express purpose of this program is to put more Georgia residents, and particularly members of our workforce, in homes that they themselves own. It is a very exhaustive process that is highly competitive. Counties, municipalities, and community development authorities across the state are competing for these funds at a very active way. Multiple applications are required before you can get to an award. There's an onsite visit with DCA leadership, and the Development Authority of Bullock County and the developer went through that process in this case, and we were proud to be awarded this grant. It's highly competitive. As I mentioned, in the application round that this project went through, it started with, I believe, 24 pre-applications. That was whittled down to 12 final applications, and in the end, five projects were awarded. So in that round, roughly 20% of the applicants were successfully approved for their grant award. This specific award to the Development Authority of Bullock County, again, is for $2.44 million for infrastructure development to support construction of 79 new single-family homes on this site. In reviewing our applications and communicating with DCA, the reasons why this project was viewed, viewed as attractive, number one, the demands for workforce in our community. I think you just heard in a prior presentation, our community is expected to grow by 20% within the next five years. But just as importantly, was the lack of affordable housing supply. One of the elements of this application that was required for the developer was a community-wide housing study. The county's housing study was not complete at that time, so this was separately attained by the developer from a group called KB Advisory Group. And some important things that they noted were that the average home price in our community has increased by 41% since 2021. And just as importantly, and perhaps more concerningly, the ratio between the average home price and what is attainable for our average citizen based on their annual salary increased from 1.65 to 2.1 between 21, 21 and 2024. That means that home costs are now, the average home is costing more than double what our average citizen can afford to pay for a home in this community. And that's a scary statistic. It means teachers, public safety officers, and members of our workforce and first-time home buyers can't compete for a home in this community. The community requires a commitment of resources to address that issue, and we're pleased that the state has been willing to commit $2.44 million to help stem the tide of those price increases. And we're here today to ask the county to commit $250,000 of T-Sploß funds for these transportation improvements. We think it's a worthwhile endeavor and a worthwhile commitment for our county commission in approving this request. You're going to help deliver 79 brand-new homes, three and four bedrooms, which are going to be sold for 15% less than the average home is sold for in our community, and those are homes regardless of age. Those could be 40, 50-year-old homes. That's just your average home. These are brand-new three and four-bedroom homes. And you'll also, in committing these funds, be delivering an important community infrastructure improvements along a major thoroughfare in our community. There is precedent for this type of commitment. As I mentioned, the community development block grant is probably the most closely tied to this program. You may, some of you may recall, in 2017, you approved a community development block grant for the senior center at Grenade Street. Just to refresh your memory, that was a $750,000 grant from the state that required $300,000 of locally leveraged resources. This is a $2.44 million grant from the state, and we're asking for $250,000 of committed locally leveraged resources. You've seen other community development block grants for street improvements and water system improvements in the city of Statesboro, in the city of Register, and all of those programs have enhanced our community. Lastly, I just note that this is T-Sploß money. This is money specifically designated for transportation improvements. I went on the website yesterday and looked at the financial reports for T-Sploß. The 2024 revenues for our T-Sploß funds were $23.7 million. The 2024 expenditures from T-Sploß were $14.7 million. That's a surplus of $9 million in our T-Sploß account. This $250,000 represent 2.8% of the surplus. In addition, in 2024, the T-Sploß account generated investment income of $1,080,000, $80,026. So again, a fraction of the interest being generated from this account. So we're seeking a commitment from you today for, we believe this is an important project for affordable housing in our community, and we ask that you look favorably on the request.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, it might be helpful Mr. Chairman, I, it might be helpful if I state what I think the motion needs to say. If you want to approve it. And that would be to appropriate $250,000 in T-Sploß funds to go toward the paving of Anderson Cemetery Road and/or improvements to the intersection of Anderson Cemetery Road and Highway 67.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? And I will accept a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman, with the wording that Mr. Akins just stated.
Second.
Have a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval, thank you very much. Mr. Robert Siemens, if you would come up and state your request, please.
Good morning. Thank y'all for having us this morning. Dink Butler, Public Works Director, Robert Siemens, Assistant Public Works Director. Excuse me. We come to you this morning with some update information and some requests based on Helene storm and the debris gathering process in that. FEMA originally decorated 180 days for the recovery on the Helene storm, and FEMA granted 90 days at a 100% recovery rate. And we had originally projected that we may be able to accomplish that. Along with some complications and some issues from the state of Florida, where they offered more money than FEMA was willing to pay to get cleaned up, we lost a dramatic amount of our team, our gathering support, that was to do that. So we're running behind on that. There was originally $3 million committed from this commission to go towards the debris gathering. And we're already up in that $3 million. But we are at approximately 40% of the recovery of the debris. So what we're here this morning is to ask for some additional funding to complete this project. Additional $7 million that we think will hopefully be able to do that, accomplish the completion, at least with the contractor service. There will be some additional costs that we're incurring in-house in our workforce that will also be recoupable through FEMA. Now, in, the federal government granted an additional 30 days at 100%. And with that 120 days, we do not have an actual start date from GMA yet as to when that 120 days will commence. Corey and I have been in communication with GMA and people from, I think, the Assistant Director from GMA, about when that will commence. We're hoping that it will commence for each individual jurisdiction upon the dates of notice to proceed. With that notice to proceed, it'll give us a full 120 days to recover. If they establish a given date statewide, some areas are going to suffer the effects of that. So we're hoping for the notice to proceed to be the begin date for the 120 days. But we're asking for the additional $7 million based on the fact that we're at approximately 40% of gathering. And we think that it'll, hopefully, we would be able to complete it with that $7 million. And if we get that 120 days from the notice to proceed, we hope that we will be inside of that 100% recovery rate from FEMA. We may end up running a little bit over that, but we're hoping to complete within that 120. We've increased back up in our service from our contractors gathering. We were down to as low as five trucks. I think we're back up to 18.
22.
22 now. So we've made big progress in the last couple of weeks. I think we've jumped probably 10% or better in the last two weeks. So we're hoping that that recovery process continues at that rate, and we will, the estimates are we will complete it within the 120 days if they stick to our notice-to-proceed date. You got anything you want to add?
The other thing I'd like to add, too, as part of this package, the extensions, we are asking to go ahead and put it out at 180 days. That way, we don't have to keep coming back and forth with the contracts. The money is part of it, but the extension on the contracts, go ahead and lock it in with 180 days and be complete with it. That'll carry us all the way through, I believe, till April 9th. The contractor we have here in town has done his due diligence. Now that the areas in Florida are getting, have successfully cleaned up, we're starting to see an influx of a good number of debris haulers. And that's being told by our numbers over the last three weeks. We've grown, gone up dramatically in our percentage numbers of what they have put on site. And right now, we're close to 100,000 cubic yards on the sites throughout the county.
Also, one thing, the city is very close to completing their gathering process with the same contractor. And once they do that, they have obligated all of the trucks that were assigned to the city for that process to be migrated over to county services. So we expect that service level to continue to grow. You have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, you've heard the request?
What do you think, Dink, far as, and this is just an opinion. You can give me your opinion, you or Mr. Robert, as far as recovering that $10 million.
Do what now?
As far as getting that $10 million recovered from GMA or FEMA about reimbursement.
Yes, right now, we're expecting, if we can complete it in that 120 days, depending on when they establish that date, we hope to be able to recover all 100%.
All, you think we can get all of it back?
We hope that, yeah. If it runs over that 120 days.
But it don't matter whether we get it back or not, it's still got to be done. I mean, that's not, that was not my question. We've been put in a situation to get the job done.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It doesn't matter. But just so everybody knows, you do think we're going to be able to recover all of this money? You think? And I know that's an opinion now.
Yeah.
But.
And in our opinion, that's what we're shooting for, is to be able to recover 100%. If it goes over the 120 days, our part is 15% for anything over the 120 days.
What is the time of recovery about getting reimbursed?
What is the time for?
How much time?
Complete recovery? We're hoping that 120 days, that we would finish that probably by the end of February.
About the money reimbursement.
About what?
The money reimbursement.
Now, that I don't know. That's dependent upon how fast FEMA obligates it back to GMA. GMA does the audit of the information submitted to them from the contractor and from the monitoring company. And then, once they are satisfied with that audit, then they will release that money back. I spoke with Ms. King this morning about our part of that money, the $7 million that we're asking for. And that's coming out of the general fund, the reserve money in the general fund, until we can get that. I think that we have requested an expedited service on that money.
Yes, so we are working on an expedited funding application, in which case FEMA obligates 50% of the funds upfront with very little documentation. And then, once the project is complete and we send in all of our supporting documentation, that's when they obligate the rest of it.
Yeah, so we're trying to get it the best we can for the finances of the county and recover as much of that money as we possibly can.
Dink, you're already the one, it don't matter. I had someone in the last couple of days. The first date to have everything beside the road was like December the 2nd. And of course, we know with the trucks not being available, that we extended it. And so, and they lived on a dirt road, and they thought we had missed them. But we hadn't missed them, we just didn't have it. So what, for the commissioners, people that contact us, what is your closing date now of putting stuff beside the road?
We hope to complete the first round of gathering, which we knew we would have to make more than one round. We hope to complete the first round of gathering within the next 30 days. And that should include the residential development areas as well. And then, we will start the second round of gathering after that 30 days or that first round of completion, which is approximately, what we're estimating, at 30 days. And once that second round will hopefully be our final round of gathering. And we would hope to finish that by the end of February.
So have the stuff no later than the 1st of February beside the road?
Excuse me?
Stockpile and stuff beside the road after the 1st of February?
Middle of January.
Middle of January.
Middle of, I would suggest that they have it there about the middle of January, so that if we, the places we hit first.
That's right.
Is, it's there, and we pick it up. One other thing that I want to mention in this aspect, and some of you may remember, the city closed there in our landfill during this process. They were feared of overrunning the landfill, the remaining area that they were permitted for. They are opening that landfill back up tomorrow. And as of that landfill being opened back up, any contract tree services will be expected to go to the landfill now. We have been allowing them to put it in the right-of-way. But technically, if it's a contract-paid services, it's supposed to dispose of it itself. So that availability will be open tomorrow. So we expect contractors to start using that aspect of it tomorrow.
If there's no other questions, I'll accept a motion.
Same move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Next is our zoning agenda, and we need a motion to approve our zoning agenda.
Second.
Motion, second, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Last meeting that we had, we had a presentation, a full presentation, with the, Mr. James Pope, our planning and development director. And we had postponed that decision until this meeting. And so there's, I think, we had decided to, there would be no more questions. So is, that is correct, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you asking for a motion?
To, as far as there's, the Home Builders Association submitted an application.
Collectively, on all eight?
All eight of them.
Yeah, let me say, can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've given Ms. Mincy White a copy of an ordinance amendment. Now, this is an ordinance amendment that incorporates everything that the home builders asked for. And it also, if you recall, we added in section 6.7.1 that curb and gutter is also not, it's not required in Ag 5 R80, R40. That was original. And we've added, based on an additional request, that it's also not required in subdivisions with less than 81 lots in R25 zoning districts. So that is, that is the amendment that she has that will be in the record if that's what you approve.
Yes, and we were all sent copies of that.
That's right.
And so.
Oh, Mr. Akins?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the amendment.
Second.
I have a motion, we have a second. End of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval, thank you very much. So item number two was RNH landholdings, since that was approved. And that is a, included in that.
That case.
It's gone.
Right. I don't know how you resolve it.
Do we need a vote?
Well, I guess you need to move to allow it to be withdrawn. It's really moot at this point.
But then why don't we just say it's moot and it's over with?
Well, since it's on the agenda, it probably would be good to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we remove item two from the agenda.
Second.
All right, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show of hands. Unanimous, it is removed. Public comments. At this time, I'll recognize those citizens who've signed up to address the board. And once your name is called, come to the podium, state your name, and address for the record and make your comments. All speakers who are recognized will be allowed five minutes. And we will have the clock on you. We'll call our first ones.
Okay, Ms. Deborah Thompson.
Who?
Ms. Deborah Thompson. That's right.
Would you put the clock, get ready to start it, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board of Commissioners. First of all, Mr. Chairman did not know I was going to speak until finally he figured out last night that I attended. And I told him, I said, I'm not on the agenda, I'm on public comments.
You got four minutes and 45 seconds.
And, so, and I know what happens when the clock goes off. If I'm not through talking, that gentleman in the back's going to come up here and get me and escort me out. But I come today as a citizen of Bullock County. I come speaking from my heart. I'm speaking to you, the outgoing commissioners. Commissioner Stringer, Commissioner Deal, who is not here, but will join us later, and Chairman Thompson. Thank you for your commitment to Bullock County, to the citizens of Bullock County, for your love for Bullock County. You are not politicians, you're public servants. You want what's best for this county. You're Christian, honest, God-fearing man. And for that, I say thank you. And I pray that God will continue to use you in Bullock County for the good of Bullock County. Commissioner Connor, Commissioner Rushman, Commissioner Mosley, Commissioner Williams. Thank you for your continued commitment and support. And I'm going to pray for y'all, because I know the challenges that you'll face. But I know where your hearts are, because you love Bullock County and you want what's best for Bullock County. None of you came with public agendas. None of you came tied to somebody else's purse string. None of you came representing any group. You came because you love Bullock County. And I always heard Mr. Chairman say, when he could get up and look at himself in the mirror in the morning, and knowing that he had made the right decision for the citizens of Bullock County, not one citizen, not one precinct, not one part of the county, but the whole county, he had done what God had put him in this place to do. And so I'm going to continue to pray for y'all, because I love you and I love Bullock County. My next address, I had intended to address the Bullock Action Coalition. I had all intentions, but my heart won't let me go there today. I'm going to leave that as it is, because I think we all know. But I am going to address the newly-elected commissioners and to tell you that I'm going to pray for you and ask God to direct your paths, that you seek His guidance. And I know there's some sitting out here. Because if your heart's where it needs to be and your love for Bullock County is what it needs to be, then you don't have to align with anybody else. You do what you know is right, what is best for Bullock County. But I want you to know I'm going to be praying for y'all, because I love Bullock County. I've lived here all my life. And I want what's best for the citizens of Bullock County. So I tell you, God bless you and Merry Christmas.[1762.71][1762.71][applause]
Lot and Zack.
Mr. Chairman, I addressed the Bryan County Board of Commissioners last night about the GSP program. And I'll echo some of those same thoughts that I shared with them for the record. The most important part is that we have this GSP peer reviewed by other people with experience. by other people with experience in writing this report. And they told us that this report was not ready and should not be ready for adoption by either of the boards, that there were a lot of holes in there, that there were many liability points in there. This board and the Board of Commissioners in Bryan County have taken on a lot of liability for what is coming forth. And we get a little pushback for having the guts to come up here and speak. And that is okay. We've been given a lot of blame. Our integrity has been questioned as the Bullock Action Coalition. But I can tell you that the blame does not belong to us. We have done our homework. We have gone out and spoke with independent scientists who have disagreed with what the EPD said. We have been chaired by people in the political realm that there was a lot of pressure put upon the parties involved with the GSP and for the mitigation and for the permit to get all of this done before the new commissioners come on. Our work as the Bullock Action Coalition has come about because of frustrated citizens. It has not come from an agenda of ourselves. It has not come because we are seeking attention or trying to cause trouble. If you talk with many of your members of your staff, you'll understand that we have treated them with great respect. But we are not the ones that have made the decisions for this county that have upset the citizens of this county. It is our fundamental right to be able to come up here without fear of retribution to speak what we are hearing from citizens. There were elections in May and November that spoke loudly of where this county stood. I'm a mathematician. I deal with numbers every single day. Statistically, this is a larger portion of what the county shows when you do a statistical report than is even used for a presidential election. The citizens have spoke that they do not agree with many decisions made by this board. And that is the truth. And statistically, it shows that this county is not on board with a lot that this commission is due. But yet, we continue to show up even though we've been intimidated, even though we've been asked to stop, even though we've been told to keep our seats, even though there have been a lot of accusations made against us. And we're going to continue to speak up because we love this county, as Ms. Deborah stated. And that is why we're doing this, because we have a heart and a love for this county. I was born and raised here. My grandfather moved here in 1937 and helped build this county into what it is today. It's not a statement of opinion, it's a statement of fact. And we're going to continue to work upon that legacy, no matter what is brought against us, to help protect the voices of the citizens of this county. And I want you to think about this GSP program and the liability that you just took on with this. And go and get outside opinions and see what they have to say about this because it is not ready. I know it is approved by both counties, that there will be agreements officially signed. But I really hope and pray that y'all will go to outside parties without interest in here and just ask them to read it and study it and see if this is really what is best for Bryan and Bullock Counties. Because I can tell you, we have done that and it is not. This is a 25-year agreement that you just entered into. It's not something that should have been taken as lightly as it was. There should have been a public hearing done on this. The people should have had their voices heard on this before it was adopted. But here we are with it in place. And I'll close with this. Just be ready to accept the consequences that are going to come by these poor decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherry Barr.
Thank you, Ms. Mincy White. Good morning, Board of Commission. Good morning, folks in the audience. My name is Sherry Barr. I live here in Statesboro in Bullock County. My main purpose this morning is to echo my former classmate, Ms. Deborah Thompson, in saying thank you to all of the elected officials of Bullock County, but especially to the two of you who are retiring after this meeting. In the five years I've served in the City Council for the City of Statesboro and had occasion to attend these meetings and see each of you in action and to better understand the kind of issues that you deal with, how you have to rely on staff. You can't know everything about all these complex issues we have to look at and deal with. And to see that you really do try to be responsive to the will of the people and to do the best you can, to the best of your understanding, for the people of Bullock County. It's my conclusion that the two of you have done that admirably, as well as Kurt Deal. And I appreciate you. I just wanted to come and say thank you publicly for what you've done for the people of Bullock County. Thank you.
You know, I'd like to make one statement to Mr. Sack. You're either going to be right or you're going to be wrong. We based our opinions on professional guidance and from geologists. And so I guess there'll be a waiting period. So I can tell you. But I hope you're wrong. Any commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say something. I know I'll get a chance to say it later, but I want to say it in front of this audience. I appreciate you and Kurt Deal and Mr. Jappy Stringer. Y'all were here when I got here and I was hoping you'd be here when I left. But I guess I, I appreciate everything y'all have done for me, what you've taught me. And you've showed the ones that's coming on, they gonna, they gonna witness the same thing I did. When you get here, you're gonna find out that you're gonna find some things that, that some of the decisions we don't made, they're done made for us. We just have to take the responsibility for it. I'd like to thank your wives, each and every one of your wives. I know what they have to go through with and the things they have to put up with and the things they have to hear and the things they have to sit there and just keep their mouth shut about. Ms. Thompson said it best, and that just shows you what kind of lady she is. And I just appreciate every one of you. Thank you.
Same thing here, Mr. Chairman. Y'all took me in and under your wing and tried to educate me, never convinced me which way to do something, to do things my way. And I will say, I have done it, wrong, right, or indifferent. I've done it my way, along with your help. You know, you never left me in the dark, none of you did, and I will never forget that. And for the new ones coming in and for the wives that are here, taking this seat, this job will evolve you and your family faster than you can ever imagine. Your whole family's involved in this. And they shouldn't, you can put a blanket over them, you can hide your children all you want to. But there's people in this county that's going to come after your family. The new ones coming in, y'all need to tell you, you need to make sure you and your family and your wife are prepared for what the endeavors that you're fixing to face. I can tell you that personally. I don't intimidate nobody, but I don't get intimidated neither. Your family are going to be involved whether you want it or not. So for the ones going out and the wives that are sitting here, my hats, they don't really go off of these two. It goes off to you and the family that surrounds you because that is what drove these men to do what they did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jappy, you got anything?
Well, it's been an honor to be a commissioner for the last eight years. I feel like God led me to this because I sure didn't have an aspiration to be a county commissioner. But it's been an honor to be here for the last eight years. And I'm proud of what this board has done while I've been here and before. And I wish all the best to the new commissioners. And like Timmy said, they're going to find out when they get here, it's a lot different up here in this seat than it is out there in that seat. But these men up here are God fearing men and they love Bullock County. And I'm just glad to have been part of it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Jappy, Mr. Deal. It's been my pleasure to know Mr. Roy went to school with Jappy. I met Mr. Deal. These men, they really and truly love Bullock County. They have hearts of a servant. Jappy has served Bullock County far and wide. I mean, he's fixed more people's cars than I can count. And he's fixed mine too. A lot of times I couldn't pay him, but he let me get by. Mr. Chairman, he has helped more people than I can count on. So he's the type man that when he came to me with something concerning the county, I knew he had researched it. I knew it might have been, it's the best thing for the county. One thing about being a chairman, you got, you got six other men up here that you, you have to lead. And they have to believe in you and what you say. Mr. Roy has been that type of chairman. He's been that type of man. Jappy has been that type of servant. He's served with, with the EMS, he's served with the fire department. He's, he's just have that servant spirit. There's been no other man up here besides Mr. Deal who has went through so much. And his family has had so much heartache. But he still had Bullock County in his heart. And these are the type people who serve. And I will, I will address Mr. Sack. Listen, we were elected to make hard decisions and they ain't always going to be right. They're not going to always be, but we were elected to make the decisions that what we think was going to be right for Bullock County. Now, if we're wrong, we're going to have to swallow it. Appreciate you appointing, you pointing out where we are wrong. But we'll just have to wait and see. And that's why we're up here. The citizens elected us to make those decisions. And for me, I'll, Mr. Chairman, I know you're going to be serving somewhere. Jappy's, I know Jappy will continue to serve Kurt. He's serving wherever he's moved to. And we'll miss you. And you're right about the families. And Toby, I mean, I don't back down either. I mean, until I get riled. I've been, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, without sounding redundant, I echo what everyone has said this morning. It's been a pleasure to serve under you. I appreciate the leadership over the years, everything you've done and will continue to do. And Commissioner Stringer, Commissioner Deal, just appreciate them for everything they have done because I know there've been some, there've been some sleepless nights. I know in conversations, just because Bullock County is important to us and to our families. And there've been difficult decisions. I'm sure there'll be some more difficult decisions that we'll have to make. But like I said, I just appreciate everything you've done. If anything I can ever do, I'm there for you. You've been there for me. And I'm just very appreciative of you, your families, especially the wives. Because it's, it's difficult. There, there have been times that I know that you've gone through the same thing. My wife is asking me, why did you sign up for that? Because I love the people. It'd be easy to bow, but as citizens, they say, we desire you to serve. And I know that that was the same mission that you went on. You desire to try to make a difference in Bullock County. And I think that at the end of the day, we've done the best that we can to stand, that's all we can do. So again, thank you and may God continue to bless you in years to come.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the commitment that all the outgoing commissioners have committed to this county. I know me and you go back to the late 80s and the 90s on the Recreation Board. I run a business and my employees laugh at me all the time because the decisions I make, I have to make with the information I have. They have the privilege of hindsight. They ain't but six votes here. We have to make decisions for Bullock County, seven with a tie. So we need your support. I'll save my, for four years, I'll save my closing at four years in two weeks. But we thank you for your support. Thank you.
We thank all of y'all for those kind comments. Notice I didn't call on the staff to say anything. I don't want them to say anything to upset anyone that's coming in. So we've got a commitment that we have to be at, at least two of us, in 13, let's see, it's now at 16 minutes and 43 seconds. The good thing is just right across town. I guess to sum it all up, gosh, I hope the preacher's not listening or watching. The last 14 months have been truly hell. But I've enjoyed all the rest of it, the other 23 years plus. I hope that we were right. I hope that you were wrong. About town will tell. You know, we used the best information that we could by professionals. So having said that.
Mr. Chairman, I know you don't want to comment from the staff, but you deserve it. You've, you've worked tirelessly for 20 years and Mr. Jappy for eight and Kurt for eight. And I want to say on behalf of the staff, we appreciate your service, your unwavering support for these employees. And you have made a difference. Your leadership has, has truly been a blessing to all of us. So we appreciate your service and we wish you well.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, for 14 months, I've been looking forward to what I'm fixing to do.